Welcome. I'd like to call this January 23, 2023 council meeting in order. If you please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Here.
Here. Present.
Here.
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 Ring of the minutes?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
I move that the minutes of the regular meeting of January 9, 2023, as submitted and prepared by the clerk be approved.
Second. Any discussion on the minutes? Will the clerk please call the roll on the approval of the minutes?
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
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 Reports of standing committees. The Finance Committee met prior to council this evening and will meet again in two weeks. Health, Safety and Sanitation, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing to report tonight, but I would like to schedule a Health and Safety Sanitation meeting in February, either our first, prior to our first Finance meeting, or our second Finance meeting of the month, just to give an update from the Police Department, Fire Department and Sanitation Department for what they're expecting to do this coming year. Thank you.
Public Properties, Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening, and we're likewise trying to set up a meeting. We have a request for council action for public properties, so we're just starting to figure out a date for our next meeting.
Thank you. Special Legislation, Ms. Lamb?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing to report, and I've been a little bit slow. I apologize in organizing. I have numerous things in my committee, and I'm working to get them organized so we can start to discuss those in February.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks, Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Mr. President. We had our first meeting of the year prior to our Finance Committee meeting this evening, and it was in relation to putting up a solar sign, flashing signs at a crosswalk at Ashwood Lane and Reagan Parkway. And so it looks like it's going to finance, so that's a good, that's good news for the safety of our citizens at crosswalks. And I have nothing else and no future meetings at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Water and Utilities, Ms. Hazel Time?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no meeting scheduled at this time, nothing new to report, but in a couple months, we will meet to discuss Avon's increasing water rate for the city.
Thank you. Emerging Technologies, Mr. Rose?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no meeting scheduled at this time. And just a reminder to the public, the Emerging Technology Advisory Committee has a survey on electric cars out on the website and attached to your water bill, so if you could please take about two minutes to fill out the five or six questions, it would be very helpful to the committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Requests for council action, we have several. For the Finance Committee, we have 2317 transfer requests for the MCRC capital contribution, 2318 budget amendments, 2319 municipal court intensive supervision probation grant positions, 2320, 2023 membership renewal Main Street Medina, 2321, 2023 SPCA funding request, 2322 water connection request for Abbeyville Road, 2323, which is 2323 material bids, 2324 increased expenditure for Goodyear Tire Sanitation Department, 2325 purchase of rear load sanitation truck, 2326 payment for Dunlop and Johnston, Inc. CDBG Target Opportunity Grant, 2327 then and now winter construction emergency railroad repairs, 2328 South Court Street Hotel easements for discussion purposes, 2329 bids for job number 1055 MCRC fitness room addition, 2330 Friends at a Cemetery entry gate and mausoleum repair project, 2332 adopt equal opportunity policy. And for the Public Properties Committee, we have one item, 2331, the Hidos Project for Champion Creek, a multipurpose trail.
Reports of Municipal Officers, Mayor Hamel.
Thank you, Mr. President. The annual Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration was held this year on Monday, January 16th at 7:00 PM at Medina 9 Methodist Church on Foot Road. According to the ushers there, the crowd was about 175, including five council members, and I just wanted to thank all who attended. Congratulations to Economic Development Director Kimberly Marshall on becoming chairperson of the Ohio Public Works Commission for 2023. She has served on the commission since 2018. Additionally, Kimberly was elected to the 2023 Ohio Economic Development Association Board of Directors, and she will be the area director for Northeast Ohio. On January 5th of this year, Derek Crooks was promoted to the rank of sergeant for Medina Police Department. Sergeant Crooks has worked at Medina Police Department since 2014 and has been a three-time recipient of the Safe Communities Award and was the 2021 recipient of the VFW 5137 Public Servant of the Year Award. We'd like to extend our congratulations to Sergeant Crooks. And the City of Medina Holiday Decorated Gazeebo was the cover photo for the Ohio Municipal League Cities and Villages Magazine for November and December of 2022. Inside were a number of photos of the parade and activities that were captured during the candlelight weekend, along with the various historic buildings around our square, which gave the city a great promotion throughout the state of Ohio. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Durham, Director of Finance?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just my usual reminder that the City of Medina has an income tax. If you are a city resident, you are required to file an income tax return. You can get all the information and file online at Rita-Ohio.com. They handle our income tax for us.
Mr. Lanier, Law Department?
No report.
Thank you. Mrs. Marshall, Economic Development?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Lieutenant Markham, Police Department?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Pacoli, Service Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. As everyone knows, we had quite a bit of snow yesterday. Our crews did a decent job. There's always room for improvement with the help from the Parks folks. We probably had about 16 trucks out, worked well with the PD, trying to hit the trouble areas. We're anticipating more snow on Wednesday, so we'll be ready. We ask the public for their patience. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Willey, Parks and Recreation Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to provide an update on some events we have coming up at the Rec Center. Starting February 7th, on Tuesdays, throughout February, we're going to have a drop-in tiki-tack swim time from 10:30 AM to 12:00 PM. That will include 15 to 20 minutes of instructor-led activities for toddlers to pre-K focused on water acclimation and water safety. This is going to be free for members and $3 for non-members. Beginning on February 12th, we will start, we will be hosting a triathlon and biathlon that will start, races will start at 7:30 AM. We have over 70 participants signed up from three states, including Ohio, New York and West Virginia. So that will be interesting to watch. They'll be biking on our bikes, running on the track and then swimming in the pool. On February 17th, we will have Parents' Night Out, a Valentine's Day dance from 5:30 to 10:00 PM. Registration for the event includes games, food and a DJ. It's open to children ages 6 through 13, and that is $15 for members and 20 for non-members. And after Nino's report, I just wanted everybody to remember that it's always summer at the Rec. It's always warm there. The pool's always warm. We'd love to have you there, so check out MedinaRec.org. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Patton, City Engineer?
Thank you, Mr. President. Regarding our West Smith project, we did conduct an open house for the residents and the businesses last Thursday, the 19th. Had quite a number of visitors, so that was good. I thought it was pretty productive. Project actually started today. Detours have been set up. We appreciate everyone's cooperation. It's going to be kind of a long project.
Thank you. Mr. Gladys, Building Official?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Mr. Dutton, Planning Community Development Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Notices, Communications and Petitions, there are none unfinished business. There's none introduction of visitors. Members of the public who have admitted the opportunity to speak and any issue or concern that pertains to the city during the portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments shall be directed at the chair and a reasonable time limit of approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there's a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach the rear microphone and state their name and address so it can be entered into the minutes. Members of the public who have afforded the opportunity to comment on any portion of the meeting as determined by the chair or by a vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council at this time? Okay. Introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. At this time, I entertain a motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings on the following ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance 1423, 1523, 1623, Resolution 1723, Ordinance 1923, 2023, Resolution 2123, Ordinance 2223 and 2323.
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
I'll make a motion that to not require three readings of tonight's ordinances and resolutions.
Second. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Hazel Time?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Ordinance 1423, an ordinance amending sections 3115 and 3116 of the salaries and benefits code of the City of Medina, Ohio relative to the group health care and travel and education.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion? Who's doing this one? Mr. Durham?
I guess it would be me. This is to bring the pay code into matching with the union contracts.
Any questions? Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of the ordinance?
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Hazel Time?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Ordinance 1423 passes 7-0.
Resolution 1523, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an economic development TREX transfer form from the Division of Liquor Control for the property located at 960 North Court Street.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
Emergency Clause request. I moved it at this time.
My second includes emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and the resolution. Mrs. Marshall?
Thank you, Mr. President. This request is for council to authorize the mayor to sign the Ohio Department of Commerce Division of Liquor Control Economic Development Trex Transfer Form. This is for their project, City Barbecue, located at 960 North Court Street. They would like to transfer a D1 liquor permit to the city from their location in Beaver Creek, Ohio. Ohio Revised Code does state that a permit can be transferred from one area to another for the purposes of an economic development project. City Barbecue has entered into a lease for the real estate at 960 North Court Street, which was formerly occupied by Dicky's Barbecue Pit. That space was vacant since January of last year, and then they plan to open March of this year. The city's quota liquor permits allowing on-premise consumption in Medina is full, therefore they have to transfer the liquor license into the City of Medina. They will employ four full-time, 28 part-time employees and invest 1.7 million in interior and exterior renovations with estimated payroll at $510,000, which is about $6,375 a year in income tax. The emergency clause has been requested because there, it takes an exorbitant amount of time to get these liquor permits issued, as it has to go through the state of Ohio. It has to go through Medina County Health Department, and I believe the state of Ohio, their employees are still working from home, so things tend to get caught up down there. So typically, we don't ask for the emergency clause, but since they want to open in March, we felt like there was really no reason to have them wait an additional 30 days because they'll have a lot on the other end to get through. So that's why we're requesting the emergency clause. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further camera question on the resolution and/or the emergency clause? Ms. Lamb?
So, so Ms. Marshall, so typically, how long does it take then to get a license through this process that it, that it has to happen on the emergency?
So the last one that we did still hasn't been issued, and council passed that in July of last year. So some of it is the delay for getting it through the state of Ohio's processes because they have an antiquated computer system that they're using with their people who are working from home. So when these applications go in, they sit on their mailbin or somebody's desk or whatever before anybody even looks at it. Then they look at it, then they get the Medina County Health Department involved because there's food, like there are food that they have to serve. They have to make sure that they're, they give specific instructions on their sinks and what kind of food is being served. So there's a lot of different rules of that. So there's the Health Department issue. So it's not just our process that is taking, you know, an extra 30 days, but it's the entire process.
So the July, the one that was begun in July and still hasn't gone through?
It hasn't been issued yet. That's correct.
Issued seven, it's seven months.
Is that pickleback?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Appreciate that.
Mr. Lamb, if I could, I'm sorry, John, but if I, if I could just add, we did, because she comes up for a ribbon cuttings, ask Representative Sharon Ray to try to get involved and find out what, A, what is the holdup here. But the other thing is that, is the business can't start the process with the state if we don't do it with the emergency clause. So then knowing that's going to be a delay to have another 30 days on the front end is what we're trying to avoid.
Right. I appreciate that. Thanks for explaining.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of the emergency clause?
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Hazel Time?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of the resolution?
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Hazel Time?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Resolution 1523 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 1623, an ordinance repealing ordinance number 2122 passed February 28, 2022, and ordinance number 2922 passed February 28, 2022, relative to the development agreement and job creation grant agreement for Expert Crane, Inc.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion? Mrs. Marshall?
Thank you, Mr. President. This request is for council to rescind two ordinances relative to the Expert Crane Incorporated project. Ordinance 21-22 pertains to the developer agreement for the company, and ordinance 29-22 pertains to the job creation grant agreement. The company has sent a formal letter stating due to unforeseen economic conditions that they will not be moving forward with their expansion project at this time. Since we had taken that job creation grant agreement through council, then technically it's on record. And so if they're not doing the project, then they're not going to create the jobs. So then, you know, it wouldn't make sense to keep that agreement in place. They did acquire the land, so I'm hopeful that when things, the economic conditions improve, like right now, the interest rates are a lot higher, construction materials are a lot, a lot more expensive, I'm hoping that when things calm down, that they'll come back and reapply and revisit it.
Thank you. Any other comments? Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of the ordinance?
Coyne?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Hazel Time?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Ordinance 1623 passes 7-0.
Resolution 1723, a resolution authorizing the application for grant assistance from the Ohio Department of Transportation Office of Aviation for funding under the Ohio Airport Grant Program for the airport triggering event narrative report and for the ALP update at the Medina Municipal Airport.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause been requested. I moved it at this time.
My second includes emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and resolution. Ms. Patton?
Thank you, Mr. President. Last year, the city applied and was granted a grant from the FAA to pay for 90% of the cost of this triggering, triggering story and ALP update. The total cost of the project is $187,750. The FAA grant picks up a little over $168,000 of it. We became aware in early December that ODOT, their 5% matching program will pay another 5%. So the city ultimately only be paying 5% of this cost of this. The grant was due on December 31st. We submitted everything we could. They have accepted it, but it's pending approval of this ordinance. That's why we're asking for the emergency clause.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the resolution and/or the emergency clause? Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of the emergency clause?
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Hazel Time?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution?
Hare?
Yes.
Hazel Time?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Resolution 1723 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 1822?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
I move that ordinance 18-22 be read for the first time this evening by title only and put on the floor for discussion and no vote.
Second. Ordinance 1822, an ordinance rezoning a property located south of Lafayette Road and west of Industrial Parkway, parcel number 02819C17041, from I-1 industrial to R-3 high-density urban residential. For discussion, Ms. Dutton?
Yes, as noted, this property is south of Lafayette Road, west of Industrial Parkway. It's a landlocked property with no access to any roadway, south of Brookdale Mobile Home Park. The application is to change zoning from I-1 industrial to R-3 high-density residential, urban residential. The I-1 zoning is industrial manufacturing, warehousing type uses. R-3 allows many residential uses, including a mobile home park. The applicant has indicated their request is to expand the mobile home park to the south. They provided a preliminary plan and have responded to some comments from council and indicated that the buffering would be installed likely in the method of a fence, which would provide some visual as well as some sound buffering. This would, of course, need to go through the Planning Commission if the rezoning is approved, so they would look at it in more detail. The Planning Commission did review this rezoning application at the November 10th meeting and unanimously voted to recommend approval. Public hearing was held on January 9th before council, and we received no comments from the public. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just say applicants are here this evening, just so you know that there's three readings and the third reading is adopted. Just because it's a rezoning, we have to, we do three readings as a normal course of business. So that's why that's happening that way.
Mr. Coyne, I don't know that this matters, but the, the agenda says 1822, but the ordinance is 1823. You and Mr. Shields both read it, and your motion was 1822, which again may or may not matter, but I'd hate to see us...
You are correct. It's a typo in there, but we've read it, corrected the typo to make sure it's correct. And I read it because it wasn't written on the paper that way. But so let's do this one more time just to be clear for the record. So ordinance 1823. Do it again.
I make a motion that ordinance 18-23 put on the floor, be read for the first time by title only and put on the floor for discussion.
Thank you. So 1823 is an ordinance rezoning property located Lafayette Road and west of Industrial Parkway, parcel number 02819C17041, from I-1 industrial to R-3 high-density urban residential. So let the record reflect it, 1823. Okay, so 1923 is an ordinance amending section 13301 of the codified ordinance of the City of Medina, Ohio relative to the Police Department Association memberships.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause been requested. I moved it at this time.
My second includes emergency clause.
Discussion on the ordinance and the emergency clause. Lieutenant Markham?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is to allow us to be members of the Association of Public Safety Communications Officials. It gives us a discount on training courses for dispatch and allows us to be a primary public safety answering point for wireless 911 calls. The reason for the emergency clause, because the memberships are needed for the 911 tower redirection project, which we are currently involved with in the county.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the ordinance and/or the emergency clause? Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of the emergency clause?
Hazel Time?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Clerk, please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Hazel Time?
Yes.
Ordinance 1923 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 2023, an ordinance amending section 2 of the ordinance number 19022 passed October 11, 2022 relative to the bids for the city railroad improvement project.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause been requested. I moved it at this time.
My second includes emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and/or the ordinance. Mr. Patton?
Thank you, Mr. President. We did bid this project and opened the bids on December 23rd. Our original estimate for the project was 411,000, and unfortunately, we did not get a bid within that budget amount. The lowest bid was just under 457,000. We took it to the Board of Control. They awarded contingent upon two things, this ordinance be modified and ORDC, which is providing $249,600, their approval of the contractor's DBE plan. We'd like to move forward as quickly as possible. It has been a month since we opened the, opened the bids, and it's been several months since the original ordinance was passed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the ordinance and/or the emergency clause? Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of the emergency clause?
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Hazel Time?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of your ordinance?
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Hazel Time?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Ordinance 2023 passes 7-0.
Resolution 2123, a resolution authorizing the mayor to file an application for grant assistance with the Ohio Department of Transportation ODOT Municipal Bridge Program for the replacement of the Prospect Street and South Huntington Bridges.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Patton?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a program ODOT started several years ago. They target certain bridges. They do our annual bridge inspection program. These two bridges are in such condition that it is eligible for this program. So they reached out to us. We'd like to apply for funding to replace both of those. The application is not due till the end of February, so we do not need the emergency clause.
Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution?
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Hazel Time?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Resolution 2122 passed, 23 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 2223, an ordinance amending ordinance number 22122 passed December 12,
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Resolution 2122, pass 23 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 2223, an ordinance amending ordinance number 22122 passed December 12, 2022, amendment to the 2023 budget.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. These are both pass-through types items, one's a donation and one's a refund, but council still has to approve in order to spend that money.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of the ordinance?
Coyne?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Hazel Time?
Yes.